Alright, looks like we have one o'clock. Is everyone ready to start here? If I entertain a motion to open this informational meeting, I'll make that motion. And then, one second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. If there's any opposed, say nay. Alright, everyone. We are ready to start this informational meeting for DD4. Thank you all for coming. There's information and sign in back. If anyone has not signed in or gotten documents, please feel free. Otherwise, I'll start off here. And I know there's, I know there's a lot of information. And there's multiple situations similar to this in the county. So I'll start off with an apology. There's, there's three main components to the funds that are outstanding in this district. And I'll walk through them. But there, there were funds from, the first piece is there was a short quarter million. That was a shortfall from the assessments from the project in seventeen and eighteen. Then, there is the working interest from the project that we just completed. And there's also an outstanding balance from FEMA that has not come in yet. We are, I've been on them multiple times asking for updates on that. And I'm hoping to have more information or a better timeline, or hopefully payment for that matter, here soon. But they are working through, they're still working through other disasters and damages from the nineteen project that we have. Multiple things outstanding in addition to the newer disasters to date. So there are three major pieces there. But the, the calculations, I, I put together an Excel spreadsheet with the help of someone else as well to go through and calculate the actual cost for every warrant that was issued from 2015 to current. And that's, that calculation is where I found the shortfall from the initial project. And like I said, we've had other issues across the county with similar situations. And we do have a plan for making changes going forward so this doesn't happen again. There's a comparison between outstanding warrants, which the district owes, and waivers that would be coming in as income yet. That, that comparison was not done. We didn't have that information as a board. I don't know why it wasn't, wasn't included. Don't know how far back that went. But it is something moving forward that will be changed. So that's the short summary, high level overview. I don't know if anyone else wants to make comments from the board. Otherwise, I would open it up for questions after that. Thanks, Jack or Roger. Anything you guys would like to say before we start?
Do you want to say?
I'd just say a lot, but... Okay, if not, if there's any individuals with questions, please come up to the podium. Introduce yourself and then you can address the board.
My name's Chris Hart. I just wondered if you could give us a breakdown on the interest in the FEMA funds that are outstanding? If you have an estimate on what those actually are?
Yep, so rough estimate is between five hundred and fifty thousand and six hundred thousand.
For which portion?
For Drain 4.
I mean, so break it down between the interest and?
Oh, that's for FEMA. That's for FEMA. The interest, total interest due?
Yeah, you said there are three components and that was the middle component. I just wanted to?
Yep, so, so I'll, I'll focus on the more recent FEMA project first. And let me, I'll back up to that. There's, there's the three main pieces of funding for the FEMA project. Fifteen percent is a local responsibility for landowners. Seventy-five percent is paid by FEMA, ten percent by the state of Iowa. So that's the first core fundamental breakdown. FEMA does not pay any interest though, so there is that. We do already have over nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars from FEMA in the bank account. So we almost have a million dollars already in the account. But if you do, so I don't have, I don't have a specific breakdown for this project's cost. But it was less than a two million dollar project, total cost, everything in. And we've already got a million dollars in FEMA funding roughly. So, and we've already assessed three hundred thousand, which was intended to be that fifteen percent roughly. So the remaining balance is the outstanding from FEMA plus interest. So in the ballpark of a hundred and fifty thousand, two hundred thousand.
When FEMA issues money for a project, is it designated for a specific project?
So the money we've gotten to date has been based off of reimbursement requests. Because you can request up to seventy-five percent of what the project is obligated for. So we maximize those dollars. And actually, normally you can only request seventy-five percent of the seventy-five percent. We are at a hundred percent of the seventy-five percent that's obligated. Because we requested to go to their maximum. But then the projects are closed on actuals. So the difference between what they estimated the project would cost versus what it actually cost us. They still pay up to that eighty-five percent threshold at the end. But you have to get that on closeout. And that's part of the reason for the assessment being where it is. It's because another project that we just got the final funds from closeout on, through waiting through their process, it was almost three years by the time we actually got funds. And that was one of the things that was not a known factor when we did the assessment last year. We didn't know how soon till the rest of the funding came through. And personally, I, there's nothing in my head that I'm aware of that would be any reason we wouldn't get the funding. It's just a matter of time in general. And they, they routinely ask for more information or ask questions for certain things. So there will likely be some of that as they move through the process. But I would anticipate still getting that half a million dollar figure or better.
So you had made the comment that there's several of these situations in the county. I guess my question's relative to if, let's just say for simple math, this is a million dollar project. FEMA's gonna pay seven hundred and fifty thousand. And can that seven hundred and fifty thousand be applied towards any of these other situations in the county? Or does that have to go towards this project?
No, it's designated specifically for the work that was turned in as damages through this disaster.
Okay, and then you mentioned somebody helped you with the spreadsheet. Just curious, who, who was that?
It was someone outside the courthouse and they didn't want to be publicly named.
Alright, thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to ask a question or address the board?
I'll come up here. Okay, I went and reviewed the final bill in the first half of this open ditch. And I guess some of this bill is due to that. And I remember at the time of closing, the trustees at the time were Don McGregor, Roger Jarks, Don Besch, Jack Platt, Pam Lamore, and our auditor was Amber Garm.
You're talking about the previous project?
Twenty seventeen, that's the open ditch.
Yep, thank you for clarifying.
And, and you know, it looks to me like Amber Garmen had been the auditor since two thousand and nine. And she probably would have taken some schooling from Norma Ronkey. Because you, let's see, you came in after Norma Ronkey, is that correct? And that was about two thousand twelve, thirteen. So we had a lot of experience onboard when, when we put these bills out. And I called McClure Engineering and I listened to your DD110 deal. It seems like you guys like to come blame McClure Engineering for not having the interest to these bills. I don't know if that's the case here. It seems to be. And they were told that they weren't given the interest to compute. And that comes back to the board. They have to make the decision. And from my understanding, I mean, I went to the closing hearings and stuff. And I have done a little reading of the ALCO 468. And basically before a project starts, you're gonna reclassify it. You gotta do it before you start the project. That created a lot of problems. And they, they did a lot of stuff backwards according to the way I see it. So it looks to me like going through the treasurer's book, this mistake's gonna cost the community about four, four and a half million bucks. That's a rough figure between all the districts. And it's because Amber Garmen wasn't doing her job. Because I don't care what anybody says. You bring those doggone warrants in. And somebody pays cash, you got a pile of cash. Then you have the waivers. And I know what a waiver is because I did the process myself. The property owners gotta come in and sign for the waiver. So when you get done collecting the cash and the trustees at the time allowed the auditor or Nick to call in the warrants. At that point, those two numbers should be compared and they're already saying that they didn't, never did that. This problem should have been found out the very first year that that thing was done. And Amber Garmen didn't do her job. And she's costing the community four, four million, five hundred thousand, roughly. Now, I don't know. We go on year and year and year. And I know Don Besch told you to have the books audited before you even started, Tammy. I know when you were running. Didn't happen.
They're audited every year.
Yeah, well, that's fine. They didn't audit this. You guys failed the community, period. And it's terrible what you did. Now, the other thing I didn't like about that twenty seventeen closing is you allowed Wrightzel to come in six months after the project was done with about a forty-eight, forty-nine thousand dollar change order. And I brought it up at closing. Six months after the engineer, the board chairman, Mr. McGregor, and Wrightzel signed off as the job being complete. And he allowed that bill, the old guys did. What it looks like to me, they sat down and had a beer, decided how much they were gonna screw us. That's what it looks like to me.
Go, please skip your comments, respectful.
That's pretty respectable compared to the four and a half million dollar mistake you want these people to pay for. That's bull you guys should be paying for. And thanks, Marge, for getting all the records and Tammy. I appreciate the records I've gotten because that... It was reiterated a number of times in the DD110 hearing that, you know, we all came to closing and the old board approved the final bill. So a deal's a deal. Why isn't the contractor and the engineers and some of those guys taking part in some of this burden? I don't think it'd be too much to ask if you wanna keep doing business in this county. Okay. The way I understand it, I'm not gonna go through how the bills come into Tammy and stuff. I got it all written down here. Would I like to ask unless you'd like me to go through it step by step?
It's up to you, Jim.
The way I understand it, an invoice comes to you. You put it in the books of the drainage district.
Marge does, yep.
Yep, and now you don't issue a warrant until it's approved by the board.
Correct.
So that's what we see in the monthly bills for drainage is when that's approved. So then, once that is approved by the trustees, you issue the warrant to the contractor. Is that the way it goes? Okay. So then, now the warrant is only used if the drainage district is insufficient in funds. Is that correct? Okay. Now, when we come to the project completion hearing, it's the auditor's job to add up all the issued warrants on that project and present it to the public and the board. Is that correct?
Yes.
And you're just being told what to do, Marge. I'm not laying any, you know, I'm not laying any blame here. I just wanna kinda get this straight so I, I understand it. So then, the trustees then approve the report by Amber Garm. Or well, at the time it was Amber Garm, but it's the auditor. So, once that is approved, then the way I understand it, the auditor takes the approved warrants in that file to Mr. Ram, treasurer. Is that correct? You're saying no, it's not?
He hasn't.
What's the deal?
The treasurer maintains the warrants.
Well, here's, here's, I'm just trying to figure out where these warrants, how they travel through the offices. So the trustees approve it.
They approve a list.
Yeah, they're?
Are you talking the assessment?
Yeah, the assessment. I'm sorry. Okay, right, it's assessment.
Yep.
So once the assessment's approved, then the auditor takes those warrants to the treasurer.
They take the assessment?
The assessment, the list, yeah.
For roles one, okay. Now, the other thing that happens before you do that, and in this case, you're doing it, we can put this on a ten-year waiver. So what a person has to do to get the waiver is you have to sign on every tract of ground that you own. The property owner does that, correct?
Correct.
So before you take those assessments to the treasurer, he knows how much to apply to each tract of ground, whether it's full amount or whether it's the waiver amount. And it's interest, is that, is that pretty easy, kinda? Is everybody getting that? Got any questions? So then what the treasurer does at the time, which has been Nick bringing forever, he sends these bills out to the property owner. And even the people with a little waiver, they get a small portion because they pay a fine. And then, then that money comes back into the treasurer, is that correct? Gets deposited into the fifty-one thousand account? Is that the account that you use?
Drain fund.
Yeah, the drainage fund. Okay, so at that point, what does the auditor do? You get, you get this chunk of cash from DD4 Open Ditch?
It's not cash.
Well, whatever it is, it's funds. Whatever you wanna call it, Bitcoin or whatever, I don't care. It's the money that we're using to pay these warrants off. And that lump sum comes in. What is your duty as an auditor? Or what was Amber's duty as an auditor at the time?
The drainage clerk takes over that responsibility.
Okay, that's funny.
The, the treasurer's office calls them in when funds are available. That's not a?
That's right, okay, we, we got that. So the, the contractor gets paid?
Yes.
Yes, the warrants, the warrants are called in, whether it's contractor or whoever, yep.
Prop damage or whatever.
Yep, prop damage.
But when those funds come in from the assessment, what is your duty?
I don't see those funds. Nick takes care of that part of it.
What he, what does he do with funds?
They go into the fund that they're assessed to.
So they're earmarked for DD4 Open Ditch. That's what it's supposed to be done. So if Nick has that, and he has, does he, does he possess the waivers? So he's the guy that should notice right away. There's a, there's something wrong here. Because here's the way I understand it. You're saying that the interest was not paid on the warrants between the start date and the time it was assessed. That, that's the interest. You wouldn't have an invoice on that or nothing. Alls you've got is warrants out there supposedly drawing so much interest. There's no invoice for that interest.
Correct, there's not an invoice for interest. They're by the warrants.
And the interest we're talking about is from, from the first warrant issued to the assessment date. Then after that, who takes over the interest if it isn't all paid?
It shows?
The law carries the interest after that.
No, no.
It shows?
Somebody's responsible for the interest after the assessment date if all the funds aren't in there. It's the people who own the waivers.
After, after people sign up for waivers, if they waive it, that principal balance also accrues interest. So they're paying the interest on that principal.
Right, from the assessment date now.
The waivers are separate. But if, and that's kinda what I summarized earlier was if there's a shortfall between the assessments, that just stayed as an outstanding balance against the drain.
And who was supposed to catch that?
The auditor's office should have got that.
That's right.
And the board supervisors.
That's right.
Who approves the assessments, which is why we will do things differently going forward.
So you weren't following this protocol earlier? You weren't in on it, Tammy, when it started?
I know.
It was Amber Garm.
But we could have changed things earlier. We didn't know there was a problem. I apologize for that.
Now, you know, I tell you what problem I have with this. On DD4 lap two, you, you spread it in twenty seventeen. Then you didn't do nothing until twenty twenty-two, and then you spread twenty-four hundred bucks to the district. Then all of a sudden, in twenty twenty-three, you spread another two hundred and fifty thousand bucks. Two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Now, somebody had a look at those books a year earlier. And he didn't catch it?
For the sake of clarity for everyone involved, it would help if we stick to DD4 Open Ditch as the topic. I, I understand, and I know I made statements about other situations. But for the clarity of everyone here, let's keep with specifics for DD4 Open Ditch.
How many districts are involved? The total number. I got an estimate.
I don't have an exact number.
I got nine.
Yeah, I'd say about a dozen.
Okay.
Half a dozen, yeah.
Whoever you know to process a waiver on is, then, so who's authorized to approve those waivers?
The, I don't think anybody approves the waivers. They're allowed by the board and then signed up by individual landowners.
So it's the property owner that approves waivers? So how come on every one of these districts you're having problems in, there's a note in the treasurer's records on ten twenty-seven, he waived the rest of it? Now, why is that note in there? Who's he trying to prove that the money's out there but it's not?
Ten twenty-seven, who waived? I, I don't know what you're talking about.
It's in the treasurer's books. That's because you don't look. I spent about sixteen hours on his books, went through every drainage history. And every one of these that are having problems, he's got that notation on there. I wanna know how he has the right to say that the rest are waived? When evidently you don't have enough waivers on hand to pay for everything? How's that happen? Who's he telling that to?
Are you refor, are you referring to the board allowing the waivers or?
I'm just referring to a note in the treasurer's records that happened on ten twenty-seven, twenty twenty-one. And there's nothing on the agendas where you guys had a meeting. Of course, you guys have kinda known for having secret meetings, Wes. So that's one of the probably top secrets. It's on every district that they're having trouble with. Then I also wanna know how this happens. The other thing I noticed in the treasurer's records is some of the contractors that got warrants, they were voided. Now, how in the heck does that happen? Because we just said how, he comes to you with a bill. You take the bill, the trustees, the trustees approve it. And then in Nick's books, we got waivers voided. And it seems to happen with one popular contractor here. How does that happen? What are you doing? What are you allowing him to do?
Waivers or warrants or what do you say?
They were warrants that were voiding.
If a warrant is issued incorrectly, we would void it?
How does it get issued incorrectly?
If the improper dollar amount maybe was issued or is issued?
A lot of dollars involved here.
I don't know what you're referring to.
Well, just look up in, in Nick's records, you'll find it.
Yeah. I would have to look to see what you're referring to. Do you know what contractor or what?
Well, let me give you some pages, you know, just to look at. We have page number fifty-one zero twenty-five. There's two thousand and forty-three dollars and ninety-one cents worth of warrants voided. We have page fifty-one zero ninety-four. Well, those were duplicated. How do you get a duplicated warrant?
Um, I'm not sure what you're duplicated or double. We have double bonds and they lose a warrant. They re- reissue the same one.
Okay, well, the problem I see in the record, you duplicate it, but you don't say what warrant you voided.
The, our voids show what warrants were voided.
Yeah, but in these duplicated situations, the treasurer's record does not show what warrants he's replacing.
It would be the same one. The numbers are?
Yeah, but how do we know that? If the, if, if the number that was there, is it the exact same warrant number?
Yes, yes. They are issued the same number and they sign the statement that if they took, if they find the original, they need to return it to the courthouse.
Okay.
So it's the same exact numbers used.
On page fifty-one three ninety-six, there's? That was a very big one. Then on page fifty-one seven zero five.
Those are different fund numbers?
Yeah, I know they are.
Okay, so this?
I know they are. Just, but they're the page on the treasurer's books.
That there's voids, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, now, you know, just for, I don't- I don't know if I got all the records. I asked Nick for every record. In the fifty-one thousand, so they should start at number one and go to the end. This is a list. Of all the pages that were missing. A list. I got two pages to this shit. Here's another page. Throw them all down. They're all missing. And I'm going to tell you this is funny stuff going on DD twenty. And I know they were in here this morning. I don't know what you guys are doing, but I guess that's about all I got to say. I'm not approving this. I'm I'm opposed to this, uh. Assessment. Because I think it's the old board's mistake. I think Amber Garmin played a big role in it. Four and a half million. And I think those are the people that should be paying it up. And I'm going to tell you, when you look at how you're supposed to run a trust, you guys don't know what you're doing, period. Maybe you ought to read that code too.
Thank you for those comments. Anyone else who'd like to come up?
My name is Phil Hart, and I just want to circle back to a question that Chris Hart asked you. When you stated that someone else helped you formulate these assessments, I think everyone in here that has to pay an assessment has a right to know who that other person is. I don't think there's any anonymity here. I think whether they're inside the courthouse or outside, I think you should answer the question.
So this, this is not directly correlated with the reports or anything that's, well, it, the information on here comes from the reports, but this is just a different way to. Show it and describe the situation.
I don't think you sufficiently answered my question. I think, I think when you said you and someone else, I think we have the right to know who the other person was. It's like someone's sending you a bill, but someone else formulated the bill. Would you like to know who that was?
So the the formulas here calculate the cost, the actual cost of those warrants.
I understand.
That's something that should have been paid attention to all along. And. How this Excel sheet was put together has no bearing on the actual.
You're the one that opened this door. So the door's open. I'm just asking you the question. Does that person not want to be disclosed? And if not, why not? If it's just, if this person had nothing to do with putting that Excel spreadsheet together, I don't see what the harm would be to know who it is.
I I understand that, but they requested to not have their name in a public meeting, so.
Well, how about if you tell me outside in the hall when we're done? I promise I won't tell anyone else.
I'm Vince Johnson. I've been kind of out of the DD four game since February, but, uh, few questions, um. Mr. Hart, uh, asked the board. A question that. You get money in from FEMA for DD four. The open ditch cleanout, that that money's used for DD four. Cleanout, correct? That's what you said, right, correct, Kyle? And we've received three FEMA payments so far, Mark? In the neighborhood of how much?
Nine hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay. Chris asked a question. Any of these funds used to pay for any other drainage district's debt? To that extent. And, uh, we'll give Kyle a chance to, uh, re-answer that question.
If I'm going to change my answer from before?
Yes, you you stated that that money was all used for DD four open ditch. Debt.
It was. It went to Drain four, as far as I'm aware.
Um.
If you're, if you're talking about paying the older warrants on file from the project.
No, I'm asking you. Did you use all the FEMA funding that we received for DD four? Was that money, was any of that money used to pay to another drainage district's debt?
So the, the three that we've received that went to the Drain four open ditch, went to the Drain four open ditch.
So what about that money that went from that? To these other drainage districts?
Those were different projects that FEMA paid. So as the projects come in for FEMA, they have different drainage districts matched to them. All the ones that were this specific drainage one are Drain four only.
So like I said before, the money we've received for Drain four open ditch were based on requests for reimbursement that all have a paper trail. Those funds specifically were requested because of expenditures in Drain four open ditch. And they were correlated for engineers, for contractors, for whatever expenses for that project. And that's what was submitted to FEMA. That's what they wrote the check for, and that check went into the Drain four account.
So these other drainage districts, I could get the copies of the FEMA payments.
Yeah, Drain four is far from the only district that we had FEMA projects in.
Another question I asked you and and Mr. Jarks was, uh, why are we paying six-year-old warrants? Why are they here yet? Why are we not levying for this? I mean.
That's what we're here today to discuss, and it should have been addressed earlier.
But why? What was your, what was your answer to me, Roger? Why we held them that long? Would you like to tell the group here?
At the time I told you, power, we didn't know they were outstanding, and there was no money to pay the warrants off.
No, I ask you, why are you allowing warrants to sit out there for six years, some even longer before you pay them?
Well, if there isn't any money in their account, they're not going to get called, they're not going to get paid.
Well, that that isn't the answer you gave me, but. We'll just leave it at that. We won't let your cat out of the bag. Uh, Joshua, what can you tell me about project twelve sixty-five?
I honestly do not know. That's, uh, those are, um, the drainage projects are usually outside my district, so I don't dive into them too much. Um, so, you know, this is. One and a half years in, I'm still learning drainage stuff and and how warrants and waivers and all that stuff works. It's, you know, it's not. You don't get handed a book and have all the answers for everything on day one, so.
So. Whose whose idea was it then to merge twelve sixty-five with fifteen eighty-three? Was that a board decision?
So that was done, um, I don't, I don't know that there was ever any formal action in the board for that. That was done based on advice from Leon, our FEMA consultant, to combine the projects. Because when FEMA set those projects up, they did not organize them in the nature of the same way we organized them. Um, they had multiple projects from multiple different districts altogether, so. Twelve sixty-five and fifteen eighty-three were combined, so twelve sixty-five was closed. And, um, fif- and combined with fifteen eighty-three.
So now.
I think you're well aware of that.
So twelve sixty-five and fifteen eighty-three now merged into DD four open ditch debt. Am I correct?
No, you are not correct on that. The bills we paid at the county didn't transition location in any form. This is FEMA documentation in their system. That has no impact on bills we pay.
No, it was a request from Kasooz County. It was not, it was not FEMA side. It was, it was requested from Kasooz County to merge twelve sixty-five with fifteen eighty-three.
Correct. But my point is, when we approve bills on a monthly basis for drainage, that's when they're distributed to the drains or funds that they're associated with. Merging the project in FEMA's books has no impact on where those bills are paid from locally.
But why, why would we want to merge projects when fifteen eighty-three was already completed? And we'd already been getting.
Fifteen eighty-three was not completed.
Yes, it was.
No.
Your request, your, your request here came in. Um, in July twenty-sixth. Uh, you got a response back from FEMA. And said that they were, uh, had approved the the merger, which they have approved the basic one, but they have not approved. The scope of it yet. So we got a lot of hurdles, I mean, a lot of hurdles.
So, no, that's, that's not an accurate representation of the situation with FEMA.
Really? Because I've been in contact with FEMA, and that's what they're telling me.
So as you got an email yesterday, the project was obligated for twelve sixty-seven, zero eight, four and twelve cents. Total reimbursement funds paid out to date amount to one million ninety-six thousand, two dollars, twenty-one cents. The submitted closeout costs are one point nine million, seventy-nine thousand, five forty-one and sixty-three cents. Which are in the process of being verified. But the scope change to combine those projects has already been approved.
Yeah, I know. And my, my, to me, I mean, I feel sorry for Marge because how do you? Keep a book, bookkeeping track of this mess? I mean, it took me. Literally weeks of digging into this, finally figuring out what you were doing. So it's like. Getting in contact with FEMA and I'm going to get the right answers.
But combining, combining those projects on FEMA's books does not transition another district's debt to DD four's debt. That is not the case.
So there becomes a bookkeeping issue that she has to try to keep these separated. Because when they come in, they're going to, it's going to say project fifteen eighty-three because that's what everything merged into was DD, the DD four open ditch. Fifteen eighty-three. And when you guys requested it, all this work that was done, you listed, it would be easy for you guys because it was all on the same open ditch. And I have the letter right here that you sent to FEMA. That it was all on the same open ditch.
So.
So what does, so what does, uh, a drainage, a drain over in Hancock, Kasooz, that shared one over there, have anything to do with DD four open ditch? How often does Leon, uh, maybe you can answer, Carter. How often does Leon tell the board what he's doing? How often does he come in here and literally talk to all you and not one of you and tell you what's going on?
I've never met Leon.
So have you met Leon?
No.
Have you met Leon? Have you met Leon? So we have two people on the board that are making decisions, the, with the, the gentleman is making decisions. For Kasooz County. Doesn't anybody else see anything wrong with this? I got what you guys submitted on twelve sixty-five. You have Greenwood twenty-five. Leon has submitted a three hundred thousand dollar bill. And there's only, unless you guys can find some other ones, but the only. Um, invoices that I could get from Tom, Tammy, I'm sorry, was a twenty-five thousand some dollars for a thousand feet of tile. Work done.
So, um, yeah, you're confusing the, um, dollar figure that it was obligated for with what we submitted, because we didn't submit that.
We're going in another circle here now. I want you to talk about.
You're not under, you're not understanding the mechanics of FEMA, and I get it that it's complicated, but the dollar figure you just.
So the rest of the board, so the rest of the board doesn't matter as far as, as getting this stuff into FEMA. Whatever you three submit. Is what the whole di- the whole district, the whole county has to live with, without any knowledge by your other board members, what's going on. You know, you ran on on transparency and everything, and I tell you what, this stuff is as muddy as Mississippi right now.
What are you talking about that I'm submitting?
Well, Leon, somebody is submitting to FEMA these bills. Who's, who is submitting the bills to FEMA? The work that was done?
So the bills, the bills are all approved by the board, uh, when we pay claims every month.
No, these aren't, these are submit, this is.
The scope of, the scope of work and their estimate is what their inspectors do in the field. That's an estimate. That has. What their inspections do is it basically lays the groundwork or the foundation of what. Project is eligible for reimbursement. So that three hundred thousand that was eligible.
Yeah.
That was starting from the top of the tile system going all the way to the river because we didn't know how bad it was. We found out it was mostly a section in the middle that needed repair. We repaired it, moved on. So the rest of it is not necessary. But the inspection was broader rather than narrow. Um, but those dollar figures at this point are relatively immaterial because we're not going to submit a three hundred thousand dollar bill. The, the bill that's already been processed is all that's been done.
So why would it be in the scope of work if you weren't going to submit it?
Because the scope of work defines what is potentially eligible. If it's not in the scope of work, it's more of a process to get included later on than it is on the front end. So it was.
So, so what I'm saying is these, these gentlemen don't know what those numbers are, obviously, because Leon hasn't. Been here.
I don't think I've ever had anyone ask for him to be here on a regular basis.
Carter, you're okay with one person basically being in contact with this man and calling all the shots?
I, I guess I'm not aware of decisions that were made by one member of the board.
Well, you're, did you sign off on submitting all the FEMA paperwork then, to the board?
Since I've been on the board, yes, as far as I'm aware.
You, yes, you have?
Well, I would have had to.
Okay, so you didn't, I mean, Josh didn't know anything about project twelve sixty-five?
That number doesn't mean a whole lot to me as far as the project number.
You know, it's sad that, you know, poor old dirt farmer old man up in Spicy City, Iowa, sat here and started digging through all this stuff. And, uh, we had years where we were in debt and nothing was levied. I mean, not, not one quarter million in debt, and and you guys are still paying warrants on, on paying interest on warrants.
And and I already said that's an issue that I have every intention of. Eliminating moving forward.
To me, there should never be a warrant unless something, something crazy happens. It should never be over two years. That project's finished, you levy that money and you send it out and.
If, if there's way.
If you want to waive it, you can waive it. If you want to pay, you can pay it, one way or another. But get that debt off the books. I'm not going to carry it. You know, you were, you were making, they were making five, five percent interest on every warrant. While the, all these farmers were sitting here and could borrow at the bank at two or three percent. You know, we don't want to pay interest on this debt when we can be paying it off.
That was an option we always offered to farmers to do. We always said.
No, no, these ones are seven years old. You, you haven't even tried to, to bring them up. Five years old? I can go through the list. I can bring them up left and right. You know, and Roger told me why they do that, so if he wants to tell the group, I'll let him.
You wouldn't get a project started when you made your warrant?
Well, there's more to that than. Than what you're saying right now. That was part of it, but.
I have no idea.
You're going out anyway. You might as well just say it.
Say why?
What you told me in the hallway, and I think you remember, that was right there too. And Kyle, Kyle says that's not true.
As far as the work goes, we know, I mean, we know what the work is. They, that all starts with a, with a request for repairs. That comes in, and we all review those. And then the supervisor in that district. That comes in and we all review those, and then the supervisor in that district decides.
Takes care of them.
Take, takes care of it, and if it's something that could be done, if there, if there's FEMA available, then he'll take it and turn it into FEMA. And that all has to be compiled, he has to compile it, he has to take pictures of the stuff, he has to make, and, and pass it on to, to Leon.
I know that's not true, because we had two miles done up there, cleaned out and everything else. And they were about to the end of it and the board didn't know anything about if anything was going on. And when it was brought up, you guys told him to stop. Stop what you're doing till it got engineered.
We've addressed that several times and that also is included in FEMA funding, so. I don't know how many more times you wanna rehash the same situation.
Well, it's, it's just fishy that the, the work requests were right together, dated the same date. And it was just to keep it under the hundred, either fifty thousand dollars on each project. The lawyer even said it at that meeting when we were gonna start the DD four. He says you can't do that, he said that's, you know, adding them together. And we all sat at that meeting, if there's a recording, I'll have to go get it. And he also said the dirt that was taken off of that stretch either has to be paid for. Or delivered back to the drainage district, and I haven't seen either one yet. And if this district is in this much debt, it ain't gonna be much money for that dirt, but let's bring it back. Or let's, or let's make them pay for it and, and take care of some of this debt. You know, lawyer told you guys to do it, bring it back or it's gotta be paid for. I mean, it's things like that that get dropped and upset us, it's, you know, it's like, we're, we're gonna do what we wanna do up here, no matter what, uh, the community wants. That's all.
Thanks, Vince.
Don McGrady. Back on, on May twenty-eighth, I believe it was stated in this boardroom that, uh, the seven hundred thousand dollars that's being assessed. Was due to work that was done in seventeen eighteen, is that correct, Roger, was that stated?
That's what, what's that, yes.
Okay. Well, I went to the treasurer's office back in, uh, back in December. And inquired about what was the standing debt on grain four. And, uh, Nick said it was a lie. So then, uh, later on, Vince got some information from Nick and provided it to me. At that time, uh, we added that up, it was outstanding for grain four open ditch. It was nine hundred sixty-four thousand dollars, nine hundred sixty-four thousand, five hundred fifty-five dollars and ten cents. So, that's the outstanding amount. That was known to be an outstanding amount. Wasn't completely disclosed to us where the total cost of grain four cleanup project was at the completionary. And this money states from October of twenty-two. Through June of twenty-three. This bond also is what the outstanding amount is on the grid, right here. These are the warrants issued that are outstanding, and they're all due to the project that was done. Okay? It was stated in there that this was due to what was done in seventeen and eighteen. Some of this debt we're trying to collect. Well, the, that project was substantially paid off in the year of eighteen when the first spread was done. The, uh, balance that was put on warrant or on deferred was two hundred sixty-eight thousand dollars, about that range. Do I think I have two sixty-eight, five sixteen? So, what we're experiencing here, folks, is a lot of smoking mirrors, we're not getting any answers. This thing needs to be audited. We don't know where we're at, we don't know where the money is in stamps, where the money has been collected. But if I'm wrong here, if these numbers are wrong, Kyle, tell me.
So, I don't know what calculations you have there, but.
It's real simple, this is the warrants that are issued that are due.
Yeah, I have the list of outstanding warrants.
This is from the treasurer's office.
Yep.
Okay.
Um, but.
Why do they reflect some other drainage project?
What's that?
Why do they reflect some other drainage project other than the one that you did? That's what you're saying, you know, these.
So they, they reflect an outstanding balance from the previous project in seventeen and eighteen. Because the correlation between the actual costs for the principal balance of those warrants. And the interest cost of those warrants to when the assessments went out.
Okay.
Did, was not covered.
Why does it show here in the treasurer's records the interest was paid on every warrant that was collected?
Interest was paid on every warrant, so then, the dollars that were anticipated towards principal. Paid principal and interest earlier with, than it should have or than it was anticipating.
That's why I think this needs to be audited, because I don't know whether we're getting honest answers here, that's all I have to say.
Would anyone else like to speak?
I'm a little sore, so, your spreadsheet you said helps explain what happened?
Yes.
So, do we get a copy of that?
Um, I just have one copy here, but I can share it, yes.
Okay, and then you said it goes, you went back to twenty fifteen?
Correct.
So do we get reports that go back to twenty fifteen, because you only give us seventeen, eighteen right here?
Um, I went back to fifteen because that's when it was, that was prior to that last major, that first major project. Um, in that timeframe, there was fifteen to twenty-five thousand dollars worth of repair expense and stuff each year. And the, the assessments that were issued covered them, so it was a time period where there was a clear. Separation where things were on track and then they were not on track.
So when did they go off track?
Um, as and after that prod, that first project.
In twenty fifteen?
In sixteen, seventeen.
So then can we get reports for that?
Yes.
Okay, when will those be available?
Um, as soon as they can be printed or distributed or whatever. Thank you.
Chris Hart again, just to have a couple of follow-up questions, so. The assessment we got in the mail, that's based on seven hundred thousand dollars, right?
Correct.
So you came up with that number?
Um, I did.
Based on what?
Based on, uh, and to some degree, it was lightly subjective. Because we don't know exactly when the rest of the FEMA funding is coming in. But, it is to get our outstanding balance low enough that the FEMA funds will cover everything that's left, plus the interest. Um, it's, it's not a. Picture-perfect situation by any means, uh, and there's multiple ways to look at it because you can. In my head, I try and separate it out from the actual cost of the FEMA project versus the cost from before. But on the reports and the, like, the outstanding stamped warrant reports, that's not separated because they're paid oldest in time. So. It, you have to read between the lines a little bit to separate those out. And if you just do the rough figures, there's one point one million outstanding. Or would be outstanding with interest to December first. And with over half a million to come in, five hundred fifty to six hundred thousand. Um, the difference between there should easily be covered after this assessment is made. Hopefully, there'll be some left over, but that's dependent on timing and interest associated.
So, my problem isn't a drainage improvement, I mean, I'm generally for that. My problem is, the first time I'm aware of it is when I get an assessment in the mail. And, and basically because of that, it makes me question all of it, the process and so forth. And so hypothetically, if this FEMA money doesn't come back, we could look at another fifty percent increase of the assessment we got. Is that accurate?
Fifty percent increase from what?
Well, if it's based on seven hundred thousand and you're saying one point one million covers it, rough math is, if, you know, if you're assessed ten grand, you're probably gonna get fifteen. Will be your assessment if the FEMA money doesn't come.
Worst-case scenario, yes.
Okay, and when, like, so when's a reasonable timeframe to expect to know whether or not FEMA money's gonna come?
I wish I had an answer for you, for that question years ago. Um, like, when the project was actually completed, but judging on the other situation that I talked about, the other one, we got closeout funds in three years. I've had communication with them multiple times, I've talked with Leon multiple times about trying to get this pushed through the pipeline. I, I would hope to hear something soon, but I can't promise that, that's just reality.
My, my concern here is, I mean, honestly, ignorance isn't a good excuse.
No, it's not.
And especially when it comes to dealing with several million dollars that aren't yours. And I look at this and it's like, what else am I missing? I mean, that's really the question that comes to mind. And then the other thing that I'm wondering is, you know, I don't know how, what each of your roles are as board members specifically. But it seems like you have quite a bit of authority when it comes to making these decisions. And I don't know if that's normal or not, but it's like, if it's not, Kyle, who's, who's watching you? I mean, frankly, I mean, if you're, if you're the one that comes up with this seven hundred thousand dollar number, and I get it that somebody's gotta do it. But, that's a pretty arbitrary figure when there's a million dollars of warrants up there.
So, the answer to that on the assessments is they're approved by the board, um, and. Separating out the FEMA from this, if, if FEMA was not involved. It would be a much simpler equation to talk about, like I said before, should be a simple comparison of outstanding bills versus incoming waivers. It, it should be really, really simple.
Yep.
And all five of us should be able to do that on every district across the county in two seconds. If you have those numbers side by side, it should be simple. The FEMA component here adds a layer of complexity, and that's an honest question, concern. I don't know if there is a right or wrong answer, we could have assessed one point one million and we could have waited for the FEMA money to come in. And we could have either kept it there as a balance on the account or tried to do, um, return and re, do a rebate and return it back people. We could have assessed more, we could, we could assess less, but then, if we assess less. And the money doesn't come for three, four years, whatever that case may be, then you have extra interest on it, so. I tried to strike a happy medium in between and try to be conservative, yet still covering the outstanding bill. And the fact of the matter is, it's arbitrary, everyone's gonna have an opinion on that.
And I get the logic behind it, it's just a question of, you made that decision yourself, basically, the seven hundred thousand dollars.
I told Marge what to put on the spreadsheet, the board approved it as well.
Okay, okay, alright, fair enough, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
So if you picked the seven hundred thousand, what are you given to determine that? How did you come up with that, seven hundred thousand? What, what information were you given?
So, I have more information now than I did when I said that figure, but, um.
That don't make me feel good.
I, I have, I, I say that because of the detailed look at the past history.
Okay, but you didn't give us that detailed look.
I, I realize that, um, but. The comparison I did was the outstanding balance versus the money expected to come in from FEMA.
And is all the board privy to that?
I don't know the answer to that.
Are you guys? So when you approve the assessments, you're doing it off a spreadsheet and you're just doing two million dollars? And you don't know why or nothing?
I think that's part of the process going forward, is knowing what, what is outstanding and what is before me.
Okay, but where I have a problem? I don't do the assessment because my amount isn't big enough, so I've already paid for this. And now you're wanting me to pay it again because you didn't do your job a year ago or a year before that? And you guys since two thousand and seventeen? We all know it's wrong, but what are you doing to correct it?
No.
Kyle, do you still stand by that this is due to seventeen and eighteen reflections and the warrants that were issued and?
Partially, not entirely.
Well, what's, what's the partial that's responsible there? Because all the warrants were collected in case where the interest is on it.
A, a short quarter million dollars.
Well, then that's why we did it on the sheet, so you can show that to us. Having you tell us that, that won't show us anything.
Who do you recommend we hire for that?
I don't know, so, these people out here need to have a discussion and do it. Because this is, this is over the top.
I got one question.
Roger.
Two hundred sixty-eight thousand, five hundred thirteen dollars, that was seventeen, eighteen, that, that was interest that wasn't collected while the project was going on?
What two sixty-eight are you talking about?
One of the figures that was done out on seventeen, eighteen.
The seventeen.
That would have been interest on the first warrants until the project closed out.
Right.
Am I, I'm thinking correctly on that?
Mm-hmm.
Well, then bookwork wasn't done.
Correct.
Correct.
That's not the board's fault.
No.
Okay, but.
It's, we, what, we were dealt with, we never found the two hundred and sixty-eight dollars, it's never.
But that's a long way from seven hundred thousand.
Yeah.
And he based his discussion in March, or May of twenty-eighth, being that all we've looked at that, that project.
I don't, then he added five hundred thousand, that we aren't gonna get paid FEMA to the two hundred and sixty-eight, and that's how you got seven hundred thousand, is that where I'm?
No, the five hundred and fifty to six hundred is what's expected to come from FEMA yet.
More than likely next year, we'll have another three hundred, four hundred thousand dollar assessment.
That's what, that's what would bother me.
I would not plan on that.
Well, I don't care what your plan is, more than likely, that's gonna happen. Because last year, we did a three hundred thousand dollar assessment, assuming that that was gonna take care of the project. Now we're doing the seven hundred thousand, that's a million dollars, where's the end of this thing?
So, like I said, there's already a million, almost a million dollars in the account for this from FEMA, so, um.
You know, if that's the case, where are we being, so that's seven hundred thousand, the money to take care of?
Because there was outstanding balance before this started that was not assessed, that's why it doesn't add up.
Well, that's why we need better information, this being told.
Well, if you do the work to calculate the actual cost of interest per day on all the warrants, that's what's right here.
Vince Johnson here again. Couple things on the FEMA. Um. When we submitted the twelve sixty-five with the fifteen eighty-three. This was a letter to FEMA and it said it all was damage done to DD four open ditch. And when we got the response back from FEMA, telling they approved it, everything else. Um, and the reasoning was it allowed the county seamlessly to track and document the process. Check my comic, go look. Anyway, we had the, the, uh. Closing, or project done from Bolton Mans on May twenty-third. This was July twenty-sixth when we received the stuff that the merger on these were done. So project, project, uh, our project on DD four was actually done when the twelve sixty-five was brought into it. I thought I'd jump in here because I just got, received a me, an email. That. Um. The project fifteen eighty-three project has been closed out. So if it's been closed out, we're not getting any more money for it.
Um, what email are you referring to?
Well, I haven't had a chance to go all the way through it, but from FEMA.
I had an email on project three four. I had an email on Project three forty that was sent for closeout in June, in the last half hour, but I don't have anything on fifteen eighty-three.
It says their total obligation, the total obligation was one point two, minus, rounded up, say, one point three million. And the total reimbursement funds for that project are one million ninety-six thousand, what we've already received.
Um, is this the email that Cat, Kate, sent you yesterday afternoon at three thirty-one?
This is from Catherine Brimley.
Yep, yesterday?
I just got it today.
What's the timestamp on it?
Um, I'm not sure. I mean, what?
Because I have a feeling that I have a copy of the email you're referring to, and that's from yesterday at three thirty-one PM.
Okay.
And towards the bottom of it says, finally, your question on tile drainage system fifteen eighty-three. Project was obligated for short one point three million. Total reimbursement funds paid out to date amount to a short one point one million. The submitted closeout costs are just shy of two million, which are in the process of being verified.
Right, but that's, that's.
It does not say it's closed out.
That's twelve sixty-five added to it. What I was saying was,
Yeah, the other.
Project fifteen eighty-three has already been paid for. The money we've gotten for twelve fifty-three, or six, fifteen eighty-three has already been paid.
That's not how their projects work.
Well, then I'm reading this completely wrong, because she said we received, we already received the one point whatever million that we were gonna get.
No, it says the project was obligated for that, and the funds paid out to date amount to one point one million. The submitted closeout costs are just shy of two million dollars, which are in the process of being verified.
None of that is in here.
That's in the email you got yesterday.
The, the project was obligated for one point three, and funds paid, the funds paid to date were the one million nine hundred thousand, the submitted closeouts yet are still one point nine million. But that's, that's what's gonna fall on what we brought in from twelve sixty-five. You know, somewhere, we gotta take into account that, that money, you know? What's that? What's twelve sixty-five bring into the DD four project? Is it six hundred and sixty-three thousand, something like that?
It's about a hundred and thirty-six thousand.
Now, it's a hundred?
That would qualify in the hundred thousand. That's, that's not Drainage Four.
In, in twelve sixty-five?
That was from twelve sixty-five that converted to fifteen eighty-three.
So, on that twelve sixty-five, then you haven't gotten.
Any.
I, I thought that was six hundred and sixty-three thousand initially from you.
It might have been, but it.
I can look at the email from you.
It included Drainage Four, and that's why they were bringing it down to fifteen eighty-three.
Okay.
To do that part. And then to be paid for it, they combined it all on fifteen eighty-three. So, all the money goes there.
Well, anyway, so far, the rest of the debt, nothing's been done with, according to this email, because of so many fires and stuff that's said in here. Thank you.
Here's a printed copy of the email you got yesterday, which shows all that.
Charlie, one more. Yeah, just one question. So, our original amount of the old debt, we believe is about two hundred and seventy thousand, correct?
Two, two twenty-four, seven oh one and sixty-nine cents is the project.
Chris Contonard on that ever since then.
Yep.
So, at the end of the day, it's probably about half of the bill.
It's substantially larger than that.
So, our new project has ran approximately three hundred and fifty thousand over, probably, is what we're saying.
Um, I would say in the neighborhood of a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand with working interest during that project, which.
But the project ran over a little too, or not?
Uh, no.
Not really?
No.
So, in the midst of it, if we took that off, isn't so horrible in the size of project it was done?
No. If, if FEMA funds came in tomorrow, or say, this fall, and we had one point, I'm just gonna do quick, rough math. One point one mil, just for everybody here, one point one million minus six hundred thousand, it's five hundred thousand. If we assess seven hundred thousand now, we should have an excess of two hundred thousand in the account. So, yes, the assessment's higher than it on paper needs to be, but if we leave it out there and don't get that money collected, we'll have excess interest, which would eat it all up anyway. So, it's to try and get it down into a range where the FEMA funds should cover the outstanding balance. But all, fair portion of it is interest-related.
On the original project and the project that they just did, all the contractors can come back with more money. And they have like ten percent in it or something, if they find something outrageously wrong, or they can overfund it by exhumal.
If there's a change order approved.
If there's a change, well, I think you guys kind of approved that within the last year, because I don't think that was quite that way at one time. It just seemed like we consistently were getting an extra bill at the end of some of these things.
Yes, this, this last one did not.
No, I know this one didn't. And, uh, and I think that the original cleanout did have one of them bills at the end, didn't it?
Yeah, I mean, Joe referenced that earlier.
That's what I thought.
They were twenty, twenty-seven percent over.
Yeah, and I don't.
They should have given notice.
So, these bids that go out, when they originally offer these bids out, even though they're the cheapest, not necessarily are they, or is it cheapest? And I don't know why we let them buy coming back with that bid without that being approved within the project, not when it's all done.
What, what I found is, is the guy would come in with the cheapest. He'd be just one notch down from the highest.
And then he'd be the most expensive at the end.
And it, it's all change orders.
Yep.
That these guys approved. And one of them was six months after the damn project was done.
And that did not happen on this last project.
I know that, but I'm talking about the seventeen, the first cleanout on the other day.
I'm aware, I'm just making sure everybody's aware that that did not happen on the last one.
And I know it's low loss of seventy, but I mean, if, when they put a bid in, unless there's a, a real reason of why that's there, I mean, if they didn't find another, if they're not digging through a mile of sand that's slushy or whatever, then that should never be approved. I mean, your bid's bid.
Yep.
So, okay.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Anything else the board would like to? I don't see a hand.
Where'd they get the two hundred thousand from the library? Huh?
That's not what we're here to discuss right now.
That's fine. Go get it.
Any other questions? Anything else from the board?
It's pretty well been covered.
Okay. Um, I would entertain a motion to close the informational meeting.
Jim Wood.
Okay, do we have a second? Either way. Um, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Josh.
Josh is in.
Yep. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously.